Police cars. Okay, now let's just flow with me for a minute here. If we say we want to do eighty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars set aside for reserves for emergencies, that's more money without a fund. Then if we say we want to do sixty-five thousand dollars in merit raises, what does this add up to be? So we got a calculator real quick? Could you help me, Monica? Add the dollars.
One eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. One eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and five.
Okay. So let's assume we want to do that. Now, I'm going to erase this for a second. None of that is in this budget. Okay? So we've got to find one-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Our choices are making changes to the budget or raising taxes, right? Well, we know we just saved eleven thousand dollars in the health insurance program because we were budgeting a thirty percent increase and we only got a twenty-five point one percent. So we can, we found those dollars. Now, we've got to find one-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Okay. How are we going to do that? Well, we discovered yesterday under some of those things that up here are the places we can find money. If we say we're going to do these things, okay?
You've got to raise the taxes six point, a point, six point eight seven five.
Or make some changes. For example, say we go to an eighty percent insurance plan, okay, instead of the hundred percent. We're not changing the deficit, we're not getting rid of the healthcare reimbursement. Alls we're saying is when the insurance pays, instead of paying a hundred percent, it pays at eighty percent. They still have the stop-loss piece in there. They're going to get to a certain dollar figure out of pocket, the insurance is going to kick in at a hundred percent. Okay? But we can gain forty-three thousand dollars. And we can tell the employees, we're not taking it, uh, it's not going away. If you want that kind of a plan, you can pay the difference. And what was the difference? For the employee cost, it would be from four-hundred-and-thirty-seven to five-hundred-and-thirteen, so what do you, about eighty bucks?
To the, from the existing rate to the rollback rate, that's already how much?
It's already in there. This is rollback rate.
That's our rollback rate, okay.
This budget is at rollback rate. You know, I, I looked at this, Eric, to say, could we go in the departments and say, shave off the coffee? Could we go in the departments and say shave off the fuel or the tires? There's no place left to shave. And that's why in this piece, this one sheet that I gave you on page two, in the general fund, okay, not counting the health reimbursement, but in the general fund, sixty-three percent of the budget, sixty-three percent of three-point-six mil, six-two-two million dollars is personnel and benefits. You know? So that means only, what, thirty-six percent, less than that, of the cities of three-point-six million dollars is using to cover the material supplies and operational costs of the city. You know, that, that's been skimmed way, way down. There's nothing left to shave. There's no place else to sh, to shave. But if we said, okay, uh, event center, let's not hire a part-time coordinator this year, that's eleven thousand dollars that we can take off of. If we say, event center, wait till halfway through the year before you hire that part-time events coordinator, then we saved half those dollars. Okay? I think we can. You know, a, a, and your comment about, you know, what's going on for the employees? I, as a city councilman, saying, okay, we've got to do some of these things. We've got to do them. We've got to reward our employees. We, we've got to have police cars. We've got to eliminate the deficit. We've got to have reserves. We don't have any choice. We don't have any choice as the government of doing that. So how do I do it? Do I lay off employees? That would be a stupid thing to do at this point. Okay? And particularly if I could shave a little bit here, you know? And we can. Okay, let's say here, we need one-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars. Well, we've got forty-three thousand dollars by going to a health insurance plan. Okay? We've got eleven thousand dollars in a part-time events coordinator. Okay? We've got one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars that's being utilized around in vacant positions and hiring contract here and contract there. Well, if we just go to the part-time parts people that they talked about, that were only twenty-six weeks, forty hours, three people, there's sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars. Okay? And maybe we can tweak it a little bit either. Well, here is, what, one-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars more or less of that? Getting pretty close. Now, the other thing to consider in this, guys, is when we say eliminate the vacant positions, does that mean that we can't change that? No. It doesn't because council has the approval to do this. Well, look at some other things in your budget that I think are, are important. If we look at how revenue dollars in the general fund were done, projected, they're flat, meaning we're projecting next year no increase in sales tax, when currently we're realizing a almost twenty percent increase over last year in sales tax. Is that trend going to continue? We're flat when it comes to licenses and permits, even though we've experienced some significant increases in them. We are flat in municipal court funds. We're flat, meaning we're not projecting any increase in those revenues. But we've learned about COPSEC and we've learned about some other things that are going to help us in those revenues. And if you read the economics of things, very probably sales tax is going to go up. We're going to continue to see our sales tax revenue increasing in this town. We're going to continue to see hotel motel tax increase in this town. If construction continues to go, we're going to see increases in fees, okay, and inspection fees. So we very probably mid-year, mid-next year, will have additional dollars that we can't count on today, but we can come back in six months and say, hey, you know, we got these additional dollars. Let's hire those contract employees. Let's fill that vacant position. Okay? But we realize today we've got to do these things. And if it's a question between doing these things or hiring new employees or contract employees, I'm going to leave right here.
Now, how many, how many are retiring this year?
We got four that are going to retire. Two in December.
But that doesn't change these numbers.
They're going to be replaced with people that are going to be...
That's already calculated into the personnel costs. That's not going to change these numbers. Not significantly.
Well, well, if they're going to retire, the only thing we're going to pay is the insurance for the retiree, and it's one. We're not going to have any, any payroll for them.
But the position gets replaced, refilled. We're not eliminating that position. Somebody retires, it creates a vacancy, and then we've got to backfill that position.
You're getting somebody to get, somebody who paid fifty thousand dollars and then retires, and then they give, you know, somebody in there for, you know, thirty, forty dollars.
But when the salaries are calculated, Eric, the way they do this is, okay, uh, we've got, just say here, here's a department. We've got a supervisor, it's fifty thousand dollars. It's an assistant supervisor, it's thirty thousand dollars. It's three laborers at twenty-five thousand dollars. We add the benefits, here's the dollar cost. Okay? If this guy retires, okay, either we're going to move one of these guys up into that position, or we're going to bring somebody from the outside into that position, but it doesn't change the dollar figure. What we're spending in personnel isn't going to change because of retirement. And the retirement cost for the insurance is already calculated in there.
Okay. I got, I got another question. We're talking about sales tax increases and that. Where, where does the city stand on impact fees? Are we, are we even looking at that?
Yes, we are.
But that's the process, that's part of the process the city's working on, where we have to do steps before we can even implement.
Yeah, the impact fees is being addressed through the land use plan and the zoning ordinances are the first step to being able to do impact fees.
Okay, and what's the timeline on that?
The, the, they're going to be presented here shortly.
But what did we have it out, because remember the first one when we had the twenty-year, the twenty-year plan, the impact fee was like in three years or four years?
Yeah, because of the things that have to be done.
Because of all the, the land use and the, and the...
So we won't see the impact fees until four years from now?
Right.
Well, I, I don't know exactly, but I think it was out...
Yeah, it's two or three years out in the impact fees. But part of the pieces to be able to do the impact fees are water model and our sewer model, so that we can be able to say, okay, what, what's the purpose of that impact fee? Hey, if you're tying up our water line and our sewer line, what is it going to do downstream? And does it collect enough money to ensure that we can improve the infrastructure downstream to continue to provide the pieces to that? I got to use the restroom.
But that's what, what it was the, it was, I think even more, it was like four, five years down the road, because we had to fund, you have to do the water mo, there were steps. The engineer told us there were steps that we had to take before we could even start to implement or, or introduce the impact fees. We have to do all of that. And the way they had it broken out was like in four years before we could start physically charging the impact fees. You know, and that was land use, the ten-year master plan, it was the, the water and sewer model. All of that had to be started or done by the time we got to that point.
We could have a couple improvements committee also.
Well, I got four years to do the water and waste water.
Well, no, because see, once that finishes, you have something else that needs to be done. It's, it was, I thought it was steps, right? Am I right?
Yeah, you're right.
It was steps that need more. So the water and sewer model was the first thing, it has to be completed, then we have to go to the next step. So if it takes four years to get that done, it pushes the impact fees back a while.
Basically, yes.
Right, right? Because if it's not done, what is that mine?
There's several pieces that have to be implemented. You got to have the zoning ordinances to say how you're going to do it. You got to have the land use plan that says this is...
But those have to be complete. He was stating that he had four years to do the water and sewer. I said, no, you don't. I said, because it has to be in steps.
They, all, all of it has to be together to file for the impact fees to be able to do it.
Well, I need, then I need it funded.
The water model is completely funded in this year, but the water model is, yes.
The water model, not the waste water model.
Not the waste. That's another ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Well, then we started in the wrong area. Just started in the water.
The sewer, you mean?
No, I said water, the water.
The water is funded, the sewer is not.
Well, see, I started on the, on the, on the collection side, just started on the water.
So...
Well, I think at one point you were supposed to have, have been doing both of them concurrently, right?
Well, yes, it is, but because of the way the dollars are charged, we're, we're doing it concurrently, but only fifty percent of the total project is funded, let's put it that way. Because it doesn't make sense to go down the road and only do the water and then turn around and go back down that same road to find the sewer. But we're getting way off topic from what decisions do we have to make here? Now, if we do these things, those are the dollar figures we've got to find. How do we do it? Are we okay saying, let's look at an eighty percent health insurance plan for maybe three years, and then in three years, we can evaluate, can we go back up?
We'll just pay the, we'll just pay the twenty percent then.
Twenty?
Yeah, we'll pay the twenty percent.
That's of your healthcare expenses. This isn't of the premium.
No, that's deducted, correct? Of whatever you say.
Whatever the health, the hospital charges you, the insurance pays eighty percent, you would have to pay twenty.
I think the employee, I think the employee would be okay with the eighty, twenty, providing that...
That we're not cut, that we're doing these things.
Yes, and, and that married as a big...
I, I agree. I think the employees of this city are going to support us.
That's what I had told, asked Jonathan to do about three months ago. I told him, to heck the employees about that insurance, do you want a good insurance or do you want a rate?
Plug in the eighty, the eighty point.
And tell, I don't believe he ever did it. I don't think he ever hecked the employees.
I think we would be okay with the eighty, twenty, as long as we get married.
Because it's, it's better than paying the fifty percent of that. Eighty percent is good, we pay twenty percent. Twenty percent is not going to hurt you, but at least you'll have insurance for eighty percent covered. And you'd be okay with that, at least you don't have to say y'all pay one percent.
Now, can we say, let's do the merit raises, and can we say, we'll evaluate the part-time event coordinator six months into the year, seeing what we have in revenue?
Jim?
This man?
And the only thing I can say to that, that if you want to do that, if y'all feel like that's what needs to be done, that's fine, but I can only do as much as I can out there.
Understood. What does that number come to then?
Okay, I was not working every weekend. If you have events, we have events.
Maybe we can... What I'm saying is, because it's clearly, if we're six months into the year and we got sales tax...
Six hours a day, every day, clear up the, or maybe Monday and Tuesday have a volunteer fee. Do it in the weekend, but I don't...
What they want us to do, help, or something like that. One fourteen-sixty, because I work every weekend. But I can put in account time, I mean, to make them mad.
Okay.
I'm going to get paid.
You've got one-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars we've got to find.
But I thought you were going to include also those vacant positions.
Well, we haven't done that. And we've said we're going to do this, we're going to do this, we use those dollars. Okay? Those are the other things that we haven't touched. Now, if we use the vacant position dollars...
Well, you want to be, yeah, okay.
You're the full-time, right?
Now, this is the municipal court clerk.
And that one has to be done.
This one we've got to do, and it kind of washes out.
And is that the amount that would add to it, Jim? The eleven thousand?
That's, if we don't do it, if we don't do the clerk, we get eleven thousand dollars that we can take off over here.
But you've got to do it.
We've got to do it, so I'm leaving that there.
Is the clerk, the warrant officer full-time?
No, it's...
The warrant officer is included in the PD, correct? The warrant officer is included in the PD.
She was a part-time.
She was a part-time on the court.
Now, this is not the warrant officer, this is the court clerk.
Yeah, I know, but he's asking.
But the judge needed... That, when they collect money full-time?
Yes.
And the warrant officer to be the full-time?
The warrant officer's not in the budget. That I'm aware of.
But, but supposedly she had told her about it, and I don't know, is it in there or...
It is not.
I don't know.
It is not.
It shouldn't be in there.
So she's still, so she's going to continue with the part-time warrant officer?
Well, that hasn't been, I, I don't know what the costs are on that, I don't know.
It was in, it would have been in this, the current budget, it was already, so if that didn't change...
But this, this piece is, we're leaving along. Clearly, this piece we've got to leave along. I'm inclined to wait and evaluate this piece during the calendar year, throughout this year, to say, because there's some other issues that are involved, that, that how we pay for and cover retirees, not whether we pay for the insurance or not, okay, but how they're included in our plans. There's some talk that we can save some money in the future by doing that differently. It's not going to change the rates now, so it's not, doesn't impact this discussion. But the, the health reimbursement, if we're going to go from an eighty percent plan, from a hundred percent to an eighty percent plan, I'm less inclined to impact this as I am this, because this can be offset mid-year. Just in the same way, if our sales tax dollars are good and our fee dollars are good and we get the municipal court dollars coming into the city, okay, some of these part, the, these vacant positions, we may be able to fill this year. And if we wait six months, this is not one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars, it's, it's eighty thousand dollars or seventy thousand dollars. And of the one-point-three million dollars in sales tax, if we continue the same track that we're on now, that's a quarter million dollars more. That's a quarter million dollars more. So we will, if we can continue on this track in sales dollars, if we can continue on this track on the other classes that are not included in this budget, and, and I agree that they shouldn't be included in this budget, because that's, because if you include them in the budget and you don't get them, then you're in a world of hurt.
Like, I, I'm noticing that you are, you, you, you know, cut down on all of those items except for the reserve part of that.
No, the reserve requirement, I have cut down, the requirement's two-hundred thousand dollars. If we're going to follow the insolvency plan that says we're going to have one or three months of the general fund, and the general fund's three-point-six million dollars, when you take three-point-six million dollars divided by twelve times three, that's a million dollars. Okay? And if we're going to do it by eighteen, nineteen, that's two-hundred thousand dollars a year. What I've done is reduced it to eighty-two thousand dollars, which is a little less than a half a million dollars, that is based upon those dollar figures that are going to be subject to change. And we have an economic downturn, we're still going to get property tax down, we're still going to get a lot of those things, but what are we not going to get the dollars? We're not going to get the dollars in hotel motel, in sales tax, we're not going to get the dollars in park rental fees and those things. So I, I base that upon the volatile dollars.
Well, the next question is, is that how much would you be, would you as a council be willing to raise the tax rate? And then you can go from there and figure out what else you could do. If you're not going to, if you're not going to raise the tax rate, then you need to come up with the whole one-eighty-nine seventy-seven five, if you're not going to raise it at all. But if y'all are willing to raise it two cents or one cent, then that's, that money needs to come off the top, the one-eighty-nine seventy-seven to, to, and, and then you can still go and find it wherever else you need it.
I'm opposed to raising the taxes above the rollback rate. This is already a tax increase. And here's the reality, guys. In this budget, what we're telling the citizens, if we raise the taxes, that we're going to raise your taxes so that we can set aside reserves, we're going to raise your taxes so we can reduce the deficit.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but a lot of citizens do understand that it's been twelve years that we haven't raised the taxes.
I appreciate that.
And, and that it's going to be, I mean, how much longer are we not, I mean, part of the reason, you know...
I would rather, I'd rather see it in increments.
Exactly.
Rather, rather than, than, you know, let's bump it up five cents and, and, you know, to, to take care of all the things we really want to take care of, you know, what, not need, you know?
That's why I say you have to decide what you, what you, what you're willing to raise it at, whether it's one cent or two cents.
That's what, well, that's what this discussion is about.
That's another thing, is that all of the, most of the city employees are going to be, like, I myself own a home and everything, so if the taxes go up, of course, it's going to hurt me too.
I appreciate that, thank you.
But again, if, if we get no kind of raise or anything...
That's in here.
I know, but what I'm saying, the employees, you know...
I, I appreciate it, okay? What I'm trying to do here is find a way of accomplishing both. I appreciate your input. Now, right now, the council has to decide, if we want to do these things, which the deficit and reserves, we have to do, okay? We don't have an option, okay? Merit raises, we really have to do, okay? And police cars, we really have to do. Then how are we going to fund it?
Let's do all police cars. Let's do all police cars, see how, see how it works out with, with that one police car. Maybe those interceptors aren't what they're looking at, looking for.
Well, what do we gain? This goes to... That's taking it to one police car. Minus sixty-eight minus forty-three is? Whatever the math goes in. It doesn't change it that much, okay? Now, do we say, okay, we can go up a penny in taxes?
How much have we gone down on the reserves from what we initially had projected? I was going to say, bring it, to get the reserves to seventy-five thousand a year, but even so...
And then add thirty-two thousand dollars back. Here's, here's a recommendation. Let's go one cent above the rollback rate. That adds twenty-six thousand dollars to that. Then we're down to ninety thousand dollars. That still leaves thirty-five thousand dollars in vacant position. And we funded this, then...
You didn't take the one twenty-four, did you?
No. Okay, hang on a second. Okay, I'm just doing the math. I had it taken to one twenty-four. I said, we do one cent. Here, we take ninety thousand out of this and leave this at twenty, you know, at thirty-five thousand dollars. We funded it, we funded all of that stuff now. And we've got a good probability, based upon the previous track record of sales tax and fees with COPSEC in the municipal court system, to being able to fund this and this at some point during the year.
How would, would the COPSEC be able to, well, theoretically, it'd be able to support the municipal court anyways?
Well, we're not, we're leaving the clerk alone. She's home.
See, that's pretty taken care of, but what I'm saying is that through...
The sort of that...
I don't think it's taking care of you.
What do you think, Eric?
Because they need their, those workers out there so they can connect quicker and faster and...
That's all parks.
And the state, you said it's in there?
Yeah, it's in there. That's, that's what, that's what...
One full-time warrant officer and, and...
Warrant officer's not in the budget. They never came to us in this budget.
Well, they, they came to Laura that I don't know.
It's not in this budget. It was presented to us.
I'll, I'll take morning to tomorrow.
That was just for the court clerk that left, that was right, the one court clerk, she said she needed full-time, because Miss Carroja left.
But that's not a full-time, is that a dozen?
No, it's taking the part-time position and increasing it to a full-time. So it's really just paying the difference. We don't have those dollars to figure, but if we go one cent, so now we're looking at a tax rate instead of, what is it? Three-two-three-three, uh, point three-three-three-three. That is one cent above the rollback rate.
Which, which will raise a hundred thousand dollar house, how many, how much? At the rollback rate, it was five dollars, right?
No.
Or how?
No, fifty dollars if we went five cents. Okay, this is a one and a half cent increase. Okay, so if you're a hundred thousand dollar house, you're talking about fifteen...
Fifteen dollars.
Yep.
And if you pre-sold it, you go up on your appraisal, there's nothing more?
Well, yeah, it is, it's a little bit more based on the prices.
What I would need to do is give up the Happy Meal and... What I would need to do is give up the Happy Meal and...
Now, I, I would contend, gentlemen, that the smart move to do... Because we have people that are seeing a tax increase because of property valuations. We still have, the, the rollback rate is a half-cent increase, it's a five-dollar increase for a hundred thousand dollar house, so it's probably a little bit more if your property values... That's the rollback rate. We do know that the sales tax numbers are good. Everybody reads the newspapers and says, hey, we're going to do this. And if we follow half of the increase that we saw this year, next year, we can fund all of these vacant positions. We regain all of those dollars. I contend that we don't raise the taxes, and we use those dollars now to ensure that we can do these things. So this stuff is for sure, regardless of what the economy does, regardless of what the market does. If it continues to do the way we're doing, then we can come back in and we can fill some of these vacant positions. We can hire the people for the parks, we can hire the additional people. But we need to do this thing, piece, and we need to show the citizens of the community that we can do it in budget.
But what was the difference last year, what we earned in sales tax? I don't know what's in here somewhere.
I don't have the numbers.
And how much did it increase from last year to this year? Not only we just had more this year, but we're kind of going to look at that a little more, like you're saying.
Well, it, it was a nineteen percent increase. So what's nineteen percent of one point three million? Twenty percent, say.
Twenty percent?
Twenty percent of one point three million is what? Right around twenty-one thousand dollars?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand. We saw a quarter million increase from the year to there. But what we said is, we need to budget for no increase. That's the safe way. And if we get the increase, then we can do those vacant positions. Right now, we say, okay, we don't have the dollars to do it, but if those dollars come in, that's where we want to do it.
They're going to come in. We can't, we can't say for sure, but I know they're going to come in.
So then, we can, if we did this, Maran. We took those dollars and put them over here, we've done it. And there's no tax increase. Well, there's a half-cent tax increase, we're doing the rollback rate.
So you're going to wait on the vacant positions until next year?
Nope.
Those are the ones that are in the parks.
Four or five months.
Yeah. That's all the parks, man. It's all the parks, the vacant parks is for the parks.
I'm just saying, they're going to hold that off until the year.
No, 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 maybe half a year next year, they won't be able.
Maybe, maybe.
Depending on how...
And some taxes are going to come up, we can't, I can't tell you for sure during the year, but it's going to happen.
From last year to this year, was how much, two-hundred and what?
Two-hundred and...
Quarter million dollars? Quarter million dollars.
So it's going to come in. So in stone, we may be able to get back those vacant positions.
What I'm saying, like, we're already at the year here.
So in six months, I may be able to get a part-time...
Probably, we have money, y'all, y'all are going to fill it in right now.
Maybe June, July.
Stop right now until next year, until we...
To take that money and help us here to get all that.
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying, I'm just saying, y'all are going to fill anything in right now until the year coming around, and then when we see the money coming in and everything, then you can fill in all the positions of people. That's what you've got to let your supervisors know, so that way they can just settle everybody down. That's what we're trying, I mean, we're working to a position to where, look at the sewer department. Like, we're down to a point that we're down on the people, but we're doing what we can. Okay, no problem. That's a good thing right there. If you just wait till then, we get the money in, we'll be fine. You know, we just got to know something.
Well, I think, well, see, right, see, right now, nothing's set in concrete. So we can't...
That's why they're working on it.
Well, we can tell them that, as a supervisor, that your jobs are okay.
Well, jobs are okay.
And, and the first thing they're going to jump is, what about my insurance? And the next thing they're going to jump, am I going to get a raise? If we can answer them, hey, we're working on it, it's, it's going to be okay.
We're doing it right now.
It's going to be okay, they'll settle down. Until, until we make this in stone. Right now, we're, we're discussing, we're discussing this stuff, and so far, whatever...
Until October first. Okay, that's what they're waiting. I said, you guys just got to wait till they get their stuff done. Once they put everything in paper, then we'll see what's going to happen. That eighty percent, I don't want to be an extra twenty percent. I mean, I don't buy it, but at least the hope is it's going to pay the whole...
If we have to, Mr. Winters, would you be willing for us, go sit down, have a, have an employee meeting in the morning, out at the shop to settle them down and say, here, this is what we're working on, nothing's in concrete, but it's not...
But what are the employees thinking, or what?
That they're going to be, that they're going to be laid off. If they're not going to be laid off, they're not going to get a merit raise.
They're not giving any answers, and then, okay, the route is down.
Okay, but the employees, you're like they came to the judgment's rally, or whatever you want to call it, they got every right to come in here and sit.
Well, that's their fault.
That's why I come all the time, because I want to hear...
That's what I'm saying, I mean, if, if somebody wants to find out what's going on, everybody, every employee's got the right to come here.
But then, yes.
And that's a question.
Okay, we're getting way off topic, guys. City manager, I'm certain we'll work with the supervisors to ensure that if we have things going on, that we could fund all this out. Tomorrow, there will be a public hearing on the tax rate and the budget. What is very important that we as a council need to be able to do is stand in front of the citizens and the employees of this city to say, we're going to do these things. This is how we're going to do it, and this is what's going to happen to your tax rate, and that's what's in this budget. So, so I think what we need between today and tomorrow, okay?
All that tiny?
Yeah, all that tiny. It is, Mr. Winters, if we can take a snapshot of this, obviously, we're not going to be able to put it into a budget, but into a snapshot format, ensure that our comptroller can look at these numbers and say, yeah, these are realistic, we can do these sorts of things.
She'll be here in the morning, if I leave it, she'll, it'll stay there.
Well, I understand that, but so that when we have our budget workshop tomorrow, we can see if there's any major hiccups in this plan, okay? And the assumptions that we're making, these are rough guesses on numbers. I don't claim to be able to, to do them accurately. But then can come back to the council and say, yes, this is doable, or no, it's not doable. And then, we can then stand in front of the citizens, because if we do this, this way, we're only increasing taxes one half cent, or one half cent, and this is the rollback rate. And we're doing everything that is in the budget, less, we're talking about changing the health insurance plan to an eighty percent plan. We're not changing the deductible, we're not getting rid of the healthcare reimbursement. We are not filling the part-time position for an event center coordinator. And we are eliminating the vacant positions. These are the numbers that she gave us, or gave me, so we can be safe. This number is a calculation based upon the numbers that Mr. Tally presented to us. So these are pretty... We can make that caveat to say, in this budget, if revenues, which are not projected to increase, which is a safe move, do increase, you know, if we see the continued, if we see half the growth this coming year in sales tax revenue as we saw in the current year, this and that is funded. If we don't see that growth...
It will increase.
Yeah. And, and it's up to us as a city government to, to ensure that we're continually bringing in business, and this is our job. We've got our economic development corporation, well, this is what we're doing in our zoning plan and our zoning ordinances, which are going to lead to the impact, is to make our city attractive to business. And, and, and here's the reality on, on business, and I'll get off my economic development soapbox, but unless we bring in businesses, okay? We're not going to be bringing in employees who want to build houses and, and, and live in our community. So we've got to bring the business in, and we've got to facilitate it. The water model and the sewer model are on the top of my list of things that we've got to do if we're going to continue to grow that. But so is zoning ordinances, so is facilitating permits, so is making the job easier of the police department to do their job, and so it is of the municipal court system. All of those pieces got to fit together. I think this is a good compromise from the council, from city staff, from the employees, from the issues of our insolvency. Because, listen, guys, this, in this year, in this budget, in this three point six million dollar budget that we got by with, with only a half a cent increase, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, more or less, is going to either reserves or eliminating deficit, that we won't always have to do. And if we continue to grow, that's more money that tomorrow is going to be available to the city. If we don't do the debts or the deficit reduction, and we don't do the reserves, and we kick that can down the road, that's going to bite us down the road, so we must be forward on it, and I'm very happy with this. Okay? If we have to address a couple, you know, another, I, I was unaware of, of the police officer in the municipal court, but that's a, a small dollar figure, that if it's a part-time increase, we've actually got some extra dollars now. Because we're a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars here.
Ten thousand, approximately.
And if we're, the savings here is a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, or about ten thousand dollars. Then maybe we can address either a mistake we made in our calculations, or maybe the warrant officer, but hopefully, we can come to those issues tomorrow at the next budget workshop. So that before we go stand out in front of the people, that we're standing up there as a united, united city council, city staff and employees, saying, this is a budget that we can all live with, hopefully, the community can live with. That's what I would propose we do. And I'll sit down and shut up. Thank you, Mayor Prokhorov. Any other questions?
No, I think if we go, kind of like we're saying here, eighty, twenty, make sure that we've got merit increase for the employees, I believe it'll be okay. I don't know how things are getting out there to the employees, that they're chopping heads and stuff, but it's like the old story, if I go tell you a story, and you turn around and tell Johnny, by the time he goes over here and he tells me back, it's totally different what I said. So that's what I think is happening.
But you're going, you're going to encourage the employees to come in here and...
Encourage them to come in here.
Come and talk to the city manager, that's all they have to do.
I know, we're not trying to be, he's not trying to be the spokesperson, I'm not trying to be the spokesperson. Every day, we tell them, hey, you guys got a question? Go to the city hall and talk to the people.
I do appreciate y'all being here, though.
We'll talk to the guys.
You know, I, I do appreciate y'all being here, because, you know, we're not, I mean, we're always portrayed to be the bad people, you know, which is typical, but, you know, it's, it's...
That always exists during budget time. The public doesn't come to our budget meetings.
Well, see, you've got, you've got some people saying this, but then again, you never see them coming in here.
Right.
Okay, so you have to think, you think about that, okay, you know what, throw that out. If you're not coming to the meetings, shut up. You know, if not, if you're coming to the meetings, then you have a right to speak up. You know, all right? You've got an idea, bring it up.
Although this is not a business meeting, if something like...
It's good to listen to.
No, but I'm not talking about the count from the council perspective. I think...
Talking about the staff.
Thank you. This, although this is not a business meeting, and we can't take a vote on anything, okay? And this isn't a voting issue really until, I think the twelfth is when we have to, to finalize the budget. But I think this is a budget that we can present to the citizens of the community very, very comfortably. City manager, any comments about this?
As long as the employees get a pay raise, that, that's what my main concern. And the insurance, the eighty, twenty, that's okay with me. Those were the two things I was concerned with. I do think if, if we couldn't balance the budget better, we could have cut some off of the reserve. I mean, you know, it doesn't need to be till nineteen, twenty nineteen, but it balanced out the way it is. Before we cut the employees more, I would, I would stress that we cut the reserve, but it balanced out the way it is, so we don't need to worry about it.
John? I don't know if any of you saw, uh, listened to the news on Channel Five, Monday morning or Monday all day, but we had, on the nineteenth, we had East Central come and do their welcome back to school at the convention center. Fifteen hundred people were there, and it was on the news. So I was really proud.